Started with our Human Resources Alliant Benefits Meeting. Today's date is July nine, two thousand twenty-five. The time is ten A.M. In attendance are Commissioners Everline, Duncan, and Matarri. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment? Hearing none. We'll go to our first and only business item. It's Alliant Benefits, FY twenty-six, Health Insurance Options, and it's an action item. And who would like to start off here?
Great. Hi, Scott Burkhart with Alliant. I'll start off. Am I CKA or H? Okay, great. Hi, thanks for the meeting today. I'm not sure if everyone knows Sean Scelia. He's joined our Cooney County Alliant Team this year. One of the top consultants in our office with a lot of experience in public entities and law enforcement. So he's going to be a great asset to the team, working alongside the rest of us here. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to David Sniff. I think he's going to lead out. Is that right? Or Sean?
I'll just take this off.
Okay.
I can get started.
Okay, perfect. Thanks very much for having us. Very grateful to be here. Excited to work with you guys. We've got an agenda today that we wanted to talk about, but having said that, if you guys have any questions as we go through this, please feel free to interrupt. These are some of the two thousand twenty-six strategy ideas and initiatives. So there's a couple of things on here that I would say we want to, we would like to present to you that could be opportunities or savings opportunities. There's a couple of things that are already in flight, that you're already doing, that we just want to reemphasize and re-educate. And there are things that we would, that we're showing you, that work that we've done, that we might not recommend, that we might say, you know what, you're better off right where you're at. So with that, one of the things I want to talk about, thanks David, is pharmacy. And so when David goes through his presentation today, you will see a trend in pharmacy, not just with your group, but with all of the groups that we work with. And part of that trend is pharmacy outpacing medical inflation. And a lot of that is due to just developments in pharmacy, the cost of pharmacy. I mean, you can't turn on the television, watch a sporting event, or anything else without seeing advertisement after advertisement. A lot of these drugs are game changers, and they're really, really helping people. They're also very, very expensive. And so one of the things that we looked at for your group this year to help mitigate some of those costs is a program through a company called Payer Matrix. And Payer Matrix is what I would refer to as a bolt-on pharmacy RX program. So you have your existing relationship right now through Regent's Blue Shield, and they use a company called Prime Therapeutics as your pharmacy benefit manager. So Payer Matrix would then bolt on, I guess, if we will, come alongside a Prime Therapeutics. And what they really attempt to do is source drugs outside of the contract for the most affordable price possible. And those sourcing methods that they use can be international sourcing, they can be what's called patient assistance programs, and I'll explain what those are, bridge programs. And they also have a relationship with a separate company called Superior Biologics. So what they essentially do is they work with your plan administrator, Regent's, and Prime Therapeutics, your current PBM, and they exclude a list of drugs. So a list of drugs that are currently covered on your contract, very, very expensive drugs, would be completely excluded, right? So they would no longer be covered under your current contract, right? And so you can see a list of some of these drugs right here, right? Very, very expensive drugs. You can see Casemtta, for example. We've got five members, thirty-nine claims, and you can see what the plan pays on an annual basis. That drug, for example, would be excluded under your current contract. Payer Matrix would then come in underneath with their care coordinators. So they work with care coordinators that do direct outreach to that member and the county simultaneously. And they explain to that member that that drug is no longer covered under their current contract, and what they're going to attempt to do is source that drug through a more affordable source. So the first thing, the first way that they try to source that drug is through what's called a patient assistance program. You'll hear me refer to that as a PAP program. A PAP program is a needs-based program, based on financial income, that a lot of these drug manufacturers have, right, for their drugs. And so I would love to be able to tell you exactly what, the needs-based threshold is different by manufacturer of the drug, and it's different by drug. But in speaking to Payer Matrix, a general rule of thumb is that a family of four making a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or less typically will qualify for patient assistance. So the threshold, and it's based on household income, it's not based on employee-only income, household income. And so Payer Matrix will then reach out to the employee and say, hey, this drug is not covered under your contract, and we're going to try to source it somewhere else. We need financial information from you, right? So there are some hurdles, right? And there's some education, there's a lot of education information that needs to go into this. But if a member does qualify for a patient assistance program, if they meet that threshold, there'd be no cost to the member, zero cost for that drug to the member, whereas before they were paying a co-pay, and zero cost to the county, right? So no cost to you. So what you're seeing here is representative of best-case scenario on patient assistance programs, if all of our members, and this is specific to our group. So in the event that all of our members taking these drugs qualified for patient assistance based on that need, needs-based assessment, there's roughly one point one-three million in savings, of which the potential annual plan savings would be eight hundred and fifty-three thousand. So what you'll, what you see here is that Payer Matrix takes a percentage of the savings, right? So they pass through about seventy-five percent of the savings to you, and they take about twenty-five percent of the savings. Now, I want to talk about that real quick, because they're showing you worst-case scenario. Payer Matrix actually has a specific agreement with Regent's and Prime and Cambia. Of that twenty-five percent, historically, Prime Therapeutics and Cambia and Regent's have taken eight percent of that. For Payer Matrix groups, they've decided to pass that through. So they basically said, we don't want to charge our group. So what you'll see typically is a bill for twenty-five percent and then a credit back of about eight percent. So the real charge to the county to take advantage of these potential savings is typically around seventeen percent, right? But they're showing you worst-case scenario, but I wanted to articulate that it's a little more nuanced than that. So I want to talk about that's, these are best-case scenario numbers through, you know, through the PAP program. If the PAP is not available, right? So there's kind of a, it's kind of a matrix of they start with PAP, and then they go to what's called a bridge program. So not everyone's going to qualify for a PAP, because they might be making more than a hundred and fifty thousand, or the drug might not be eligible for a PAP. Not all drugs are eligible for a PAP. They would then go and try to qualify for what the pharmaceutical company calls a bridge program. And a bridge program is typically a program where the drug is covered for that member for free for a two-year period, and kind of bridge the gap, if you will. And that's not based on need, so there's no income collection necessary for that bridge program. It's just the fact that the manufacturer has that particular program in place, because they want the member to take their drug. They don't want the member to take somebody else's drug and go to a competitor. So they have these potential bridge programs. So that would be the second area where they would try to find savings. The third area, if there's no PAP and there's no bridge, third area they attempt to find savings is international sourcing. So international sourcing that Payer Matrix does is done through Canada, and that's typically at about a fifty percent discount to the cost of your current drugs. So I have a couple of examples I wanted to just, and they're not listed here, but we have a couple of folks, we have three people taking Sky Rizzi. I don't know if you've seen Sky Rizzi commercials. It's a very expensive drug. You have three people taking Sky Rizzi. It's about two hundred and four thousand dollars annually for those three people for that drug. And we have two people taking Renvoc. That's about a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars a year for those two people. Sky Rizzi and Renvoc, you will not see on this list up here, because those drugs are not eligible for a PAP program. But those drugs can be sourced, according to Payer Matrix, internationally through Canada, same exact drugs. So we're not talking about off-brand, at a fifty percent discount. So these potential savings, you know, cut to two hundred and four and a hundred and fifty-six and a half, right? Let's say it's three fifty, now you're, what you would have paid three fifty, now you're paying about a hundred and fifty-four. No cost to the member. Member went up a zero cost share, and the county would have significantly reduced savings. Those estimates are not included in that, because that, again, is just reflective of patient assistance programs. But that's also a place where you could find potential savings. Another example, we've got Stellara. We've got one person taking Stellara. They fill that prescription once a month. That's three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars annually. It's a very expensive, very unique drug. So you also will not see Stellara on this.
No, Stellara's there.
Oh, okay. So Stellara, Stellara is there. If someone doesn't qualify for the PAP, if that person that's taking Stellara doesn't qualify for the patient assistance program there, what Payer Matrix would do, would they attempt to source this through a company that they work with called Superior Biologics, that provides biosimilars, right? So they could replace Stellara with a, with a drug called Weslana, and instead of paying three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars a year, that drug is roughly seventy-three thousand, two hundred dollars a year. Again, no cost to the member, significantly reduced cost to the county, assuming the member could, you know, could tolerate that, that change, right? Humira would be the last example I'll, I'll give you. And Humira right now, again, that Humira is not on the list. It's not, does not qualify for a PAP program. We have four people taking that annually. That totals to three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars a year. Payer Matrix would attempt to source that through Superior Biologics. Usimary is the name of that drug, and that would be at about an eighty percent discount to that three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So companies like Payer Matrix have come in to the market, and there are other ones. The reason we're looking at Payer Matrix through you is because that connection with Regent's has already been built, that's already been established. We have, already have other groups in the area that are, that are doing this, that are taking advantage of these savings, right? And so it makes the most sense, if you were to do something like that, to go with that type of company, to go with Payer Matrix. David's going to tell you why these savings aren't as, we believe there are significant savings there that could move the needle on your renewal increase, should you do something like this. We don't think they're going to be as exorbitant as what Payer Matrix claims, because on a lot of these drugs, you guys currently receive rebates, right? Back. You're eligible for those manufacturer rebates. Well, if they're no longer covered under the plan, you're no longer receiving those rebates. Now, having said that, the savings far outweigh the rebates, but there's an offsetting effect that David will talk about, where we think, we're trying to, we'll try to give you a very, very accurate number on what we think they'll actually save, right? And we'll give you a range. So again, to summarize, Payer Matrix is something that we think, you know, is good for the county to consider. It could save significant dollars. I do want to not paint just a completely rosy picture. I want to give you a balanced, I have a balanced explanation, if you will, because there will be disruption, right? There will be member noise. There will be folks that call and say, hey, I got to let, this was covered and now it's not covered. You know, it's, you're making an omelet, in a sense, and it takes a while to educate folks, too, about the new protocol. Once that's up and, up and running, folks do become familiar with it, but savings are very, very hard to ignore. In the event that a member, you know, there's a drug out there that doesn't qualify for PAP, doesn't qualify for bridge, they can't source it internationally, and they can't get it through Superior Biologics, there is also the, the potential that the plan, the plan, you as the plan sponsor, might have to do an out-of-contract exception. You might have to say, okay, well, we're going to go ahead and cover this drug and do a one-off exception to approve it, right? Even though it's no longer, because it's no longer a covered medication under Prime Therapeutics. That could happen. And there's a process, that's a process to go through. So there are some hurdles, but I would say the biggest hurdle when taking on a program like this is just simply education, educating the members, making sure that there's someone there. In addition to Payer Matrix, you know, could be somebody at the county, could be somebody at our office, helping them walk through that process, right? To explain, hey, this is, you know, this is the process. Someone could say, you know, hey, I don't, you know, it's not covered. I'm going through this application process of how to provide financial information, and I'm waiting. What do I do now? How do I get my drug filled? What Payer Matrix will try to do to bridge that gap is source that drug internationally, kind of to get that member the drug at a discounted rate until they know yes or no, it is covered or it's not covered under the patient assistance program. I'm going to pause. It's a lot of information, but I wanted to give you a, a good explanation of how they go about what they do and try to achieve these savings.
Thank you. Any questions up here?
I do. How many people are going to be affected potentially in Cooney County?
So just for the PAP, right now, there's twenty-two members that could qualify for a hundred and fifty-seven claims. And keep in mind that this floats as people come in and out of prescriptions or get new diagnoses. And then I would say it's going to be a little north of that when we consider some of the other drugs that aren't PAP-eligible, like Renvoc, Sky Rizzi. There's another three, there's another five people there. There's another four people on Humira. I would say somewhere around that thirty, thirty-five mark-ish.
Okay. Out of twelve hundred on our plan? Yeah?
Yep.
Okay.
The key to this is upfront communication with the member. So what our groups have done is gone outreach, like to those twenty-two members direct, communicate what we're doing. We're not eliminating the drug. We're just changing how we go about it and explaining that, you know, some of these drugs, one drug costs three hundred and twenty thousand a year. Can you work with us through our care manager, fill out the paperwork, and go through a new process? And once you get those initial twenty-two established, then any new member, it's just a process that's just part of the system.
Okay. And then how many months? Because this doesn't start till the first, right? January first?
Yes.
Okay. So you'd have essentially six months to get the people educated and onboard.
And then that, that PAP program, that's a, you just made me think of some of that PAP program, then needs to be re-approved annually, right? So let's say they get them approved for January twenty-twenty-six for a PAP, and they would then go through that reapproval process for Jan., January one, twenty-twenty-seven.
It's because it's income-driven.
Yep.
So just, I have a couple of questions. Are you done?
Yep.
Commissioner Everline, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. All right. First one is, is, does the county get charged on a recurring basis? Or is the, is it through the savings that the Payer Matrix gets the cut of the savings? So we sign up, there's zero cost until the pharmaceuticals start going through the program?
Yep. It's through the savings.
Okay. And can you remind me what the bridge program was again?
So the bridge program is a program that manufacturers have. It's not based on income or need, but it's, and it, not all men, not all drug, it's not eligible for all drugs. But what they do is they typically have a program for a two-year period where those, those drugs are covered for free.
Okay.
And that they do that because they want members to take their drug, not lead to a competing drug. It's kind of get them in the system and used to taking it, create some brand loyalty, and, but again, they don't have that for every single drug. And it's a two-year period.
And you mentioned something about possibly a patient switching from one drug that cost a lot to a different drug.
Right.
That's significantly less expensive. Who drives that process? Because a lot of times, you know, people buy the name-brand drug or use that and don't want to go to generics, as an example, because it just doesn't have the same, I believe it would be efficacy in that sense.
That's a great question.
So who drives that process?
Payer Matrix. And so David and I were actually talking about that before the meeting, as it relates to Humira, and that might be a good example. So Payer Matrix would reach out to the four people that we have on Humira right now, and they would attempt to migrate those folks over to a drug called Usimary. And they would source that through Superior Biologics at an eighty percent discount, Usimary, to what we currently have. And there is a chance that someone cannot tolerate Usimary the same way as they can Humira, right? It's entirely possible. At which point in time that member would most likely migrate back to Humira, right? And there would be no savings, right? There is a process for them to go, to go through that.
Is there an incentive?
The incentive for them to take Usimary.
I mean, because it's for us, but not for the patient necessarily.
Well, for the patient, it's, if they're taking Usimary, there's no copays. There's no cost to them. There's no cost to that drug. If they get that covered at a hundred percent, and there's a benefit to you, the county, because you're no longer paying three hundred and eighty-five thousand for that drug, for those four folks. You're paying eighty percent discount. So you have a significantly reduced, so it's a benefit to both of you, but at the same time, at the end of the day, if the member can't tolerate the drug, then yeah, they would, there's a process to then appeal that and continue to take Humira.
Okay. So there is an incentive for the patient?
There is.
A financial one?
No more copays on those drugs if they participate in that program, yeah. It's a hundred percent covered.
And what typically would a co-pay be?
Depends on what tier it falls into. Typically, the, I don't know what the, do you know Koku, the special?
I mean, are we talking like fifty bucks co-pay, or are we talking five hundred, a thousand co-pay?
I'll look it up.
We can look it up.
I believe some of these drugs might even be under deductible coinsurance, too, where it's eighty, twenty, right? So that, there's big savings for the member potentially.
Okay.
Especially on some of the higher cost.
Well, that, that helps, having a bigger driver like that than a very small incentive.
Well, I'll clarify something, too, because he's using the different names. Usimary is, just thinking, it's terms generic Humira. So with these medications, they're, when the generic comes out, it's called a biosimilar, because it's an injectable. There's a whole bunch of different ones, and they all have names associated with them because of the price point. When you see a generic for a lower-cost medication, it's just a generic. So it's really the same medication, pretty close to it. There is one difference. There's something called interchangeability, and interchangeability is just basically based on how it's tested, meaning you can't necessarily tell, or for some people, it doesn't always work exactly the same. So Usimary is one that's not interchangeable, meaning that for some people, they will have a reaction to it, and we've seen that in our book of business from people that have moved. Regardless, on your plan, people will be moving to a biosimilar for Humira anyway, just not necessarily Usimary, which is the cheapest one. That's, we didn't include that in the savings. And so to put the number out there, because you're looking at these numbers, he's talking about all kinds of different numbers, the number I estimate the savings to be is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, based on like a certain percentage of people participating. Not everyone, you know, participates or gets a chance to do it, and the fact that, you know, these are not all in full. So when they did the analysis, they looked at every claim that came through, but you see several people on there are one person, one claim. Well, they'd be, if they're still on the drug, if that was just one month, they're going to be on it for twelve months. Some of those people are on that drug. So I know one people on, on Imbrel was on Imbrel for a month, and then they went to Humira. So we had that same person twice. But when I looked through the data, I said the savings is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we net out the impact of the rebates, when we take into account everything else. So that's the number we're looking at, which is a, still a pretty big number, and that's after paying them also, the person of savings.
And I trust that the doctor is also an X-factor in this equation, as far as, you know, switching from one pharmaceutical to a different prescription.
And Payer Matrix coordinates all that. They take the lead on it. Once we get their care coordinators involved, they know how to communicate with the member, with the doctor, with the manufacturers, through the whole process.
Okay.
There's no interaction from H.R. needing, per se, other than just helping facilitate communication, applications, et cetera, if needed. But yeah.
All right. Well, if there's no other questions, please proceed. Sorry to kind of bombard you there a little bit.
Okay.
It's the hardest part of the whole meeting.
Yeah. So that's the, everything else some of them talk about, we'll, we'll go through pretty quickly, but we wanted to spend time on this, because we wanted you to understand that it's, it's not just patient assistance, it's bridge, it's international sourcing, it's biosimilars. So they're, they're looking at it from a variety of different ways. The other thing we wanted to talk about, we looked at your dental benefit this year. Currently, you're with Delta Dental and Willamette Dental. We looked at Northwest Dental Benefits. They're a very good, well-known clinic, a brand here in town, and we, they, they wanted us to provide us with a proposal with a quote to replace Willamette Dental. And we, we looked at them, we met with them, we had several conference calls, they provided us with a proposal. We don't recommend you change from Willamette. The benefits through Northwest Dental Benefits are slightly more than you currently enjoy with Willamette, and the benefits in some of the categories aren't as rich. And so they were close, and we'll continue to look at it in subsequent years, but it just doesn't pencil this year. And we also would hate to see, if we were to put that in place, replace it with Lamet, we'd hate to see any cannibalization from Delta Dental, because Delta Dental is the most competitive option that you have. So we looked at it. It doesn't make sense. We recommend here that you renew as-is on your current platform. The next thing we looked at was the Employee Assistance Program, the EAP program you have through your, for your employees. That's currently through Uprise, a company called Uprise. Over time, there's been several, the reason we went out to market and looked at replacing Uprise is because they have a tendency to charge on an à la carte basis, and there's been some service issues over the years. And so we wanted to look at some other vendors that we've had good success with. So we looked at KiraLink. KiraLink provides one more visit per person per year than Uprise. They also have hours baked in to their cost, so they have hours baked in to, for benefits, fair open enrollment meetings, for critical incident response, for work site services training. That's already included in the cost, ten hours in total annually, where the county would not be nickel-and-dimed, I guess, if you will, for, and charged for every single thing. So it's, your dollar goes a little bit further, and the rates are less. So the rates are slightly less than where, you know, you're currently at with Uprise. So given the service issues, better, better benefits for the employees, and another, you know, another visit per calendar year, better rates than what you currently enjoy, as well as hours included for service that aren't all charged à la carte. We think it's, we would say, and we would recommend KiraLink to move from Uprise to KiraLink. So, and that was driven, you know, based on our conversations with H.R. and some of the issues that they've had over time. So the next thing we wanted to talk about, this is something that you're already doing right now. Edison is a vendor that you're already using. It's already running underneath your current platform. And I like to think of Edison as a centers of excellence, that, so they're a vendor that has, takes advantage, when someone needs a surgery, they, they really get that person hooked up with the best possible center of excellence to do that surgery. And I also think of it as second opinion insurance, right? So think of it as somebody taking a look at something, checking somebody else's work and saying, okay, well, we, you know, we think you might, might have been misdiagnosed. And so we get a report from, from these folks every, every single year on how many folks engaged. It's voluntary engagement. How many folks engaged, how many second opinions they gave, misdiagnosis that they caught. Change in treatment plans is also a big area for savings, and surgery avoidance. And a lot of these centers of excellence, what's harder to, harder to quantify is when somebody goes to a centers, center of excellence. A lot of times, some of the soft savings that you might not see here are the fact that the readmission rate to that particular facility is a lot less than somewhere else. Nonetheless, total net savings reported by Edison is around two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And so we just want to, along with the onsite clinic, we just want to continue to emphasize Edison and educate, and it's just something we wanted to bring to your attention. It's good news, the savings, but also how do we continue to leverage this to get more participation as we go forward, right?
So what does that mean for cost? So if we're looking at the projection for next year, sometimes everyone's just waiting on this slide. You know, say, where are we going?
Where are we going? The thing I want to remind everyone, I do it every single time, is the fiscal year is October through September. And I know you all know that. The planned year is January through December. So we're always bridging that little difference. And so just because I'm showing, you know, something here for medical, that doesn't mean that's going to be the rate increase for medical in January. We're going to have three more months of data before we, you know, really finalize what's happening in January. But this is saying for the fiscal year, based on what we're seeing now, here's what we're expecting that increase in cost to be over time. And there's different categories. You can see them broken down. The administrative services, you know, that you can see as a negative. The reason that's a negative is the pharmacy rebates are in there right now. You know, and I'm really showing this based on, I know the rebates have recently been moved to their own category. But I don't necessarily even like showing this from the accounting perspective, more from a total perspective, because that's really how it hits you. But I did want to explain that negative that you see there. The medical claims, you know, the big ones there that show up, the medical claims, we're assuming a 6% trend moving forward to next year. So what that 6% trend says is I take the claims in this base period and I say they're going to increase by about 6% annually. I apply that over time to get to that future timeframe, say this is what it is. And then we also have a reduction in there for the continued impact of the clinic. Because we're going to start seeing the savings for that clinic impact more and more. And so we need to account for that. Otherwise, we're just adding the cost of the clinic by not showing the savings as they're starting to show up. So know that that's there in the medical claims. And the 14% isn't saying they're increasing by 14%. They're increasing over the budget by 14%. Because we did have a spike in medical claims. We saw that pretty much in Idaho, Montana, Eastern Washington in this last year. Last year and a half early, we've kind of had a spike up. It's hit different people at different times. I do expect that that spike that we're seeing is going to mitigate some, but I'm not banking on that. Because we need to see that that's just not a new level. There are certain things that kind of come into play. As you may have seen, hospitals are constantly, they've been losing money. They've been asking for bigger increases and they usually have. And so they're one of the biggest impactors to trend. The other big impact of the trend is pharmacy. And that's why we're attacking that piece, because that's an area where we can get pretty good savings pretty quickly. If I add all these things up, 8.6% is the increase. If we don't increase how much the employees pay, that's a 9.9, right? So because if the whole thing increases and the employees don't pay more, then the county is absorbing more of that increase. Those numbers come down by about 3% if we do the change for payer matrix. We add that in there. So we're looking at closer to 6%. It's like 6.5 and trying to remember exactly what it was. I'll pull it up in a second here. But it brings this down pretty significantly so that we're not right under that 10%. We're at a number that's more in line with what trend is. And so that's why it's a very strong recommendation from us to take that tack. Because not only is it a good solution that provides savings, but we also have it in place with other people. We've seen that the value is worth way more than the noise. And you don't have that many opportunities to save that much money anymore doing just about anything else. Anything else that you're going to save that much money on is not going to impact 25 people. It's going to impact 200 people. So that's why it's very important. And the other thing is, it doesn't actually change the value that the people get. People get more value, not less value. So you don't get opportunities like that every day. There are some changes there on the bottom. You see the medical plan employees, you know, dropping because the budget last year, we had 770. We have less employees now. After talking with HR, 750 is the expectation for the number of employees in the coming year. So that wasn't just a willing to know number that's out there. And then you also see, you know, reductions in some of the others. Willamette, we're not saying you're going to increase the number of people on Willamette. It's we budgeted 175 people and more people have selected it than what we were anticipating. And so it's really more reflective of that than it is that we think people are going to move to it greater. We think that based on where you are now, you tend to get to that equilibrium enrollment where there's not going to be much movement between the two plans. Even with the selection of new members, when you hire someone new, that that should follow about the same pattern. And so we shouldn't see much more movement from Delta to Willamette. Unless we ever made plan design changes in one of the plans or changed the contribution structure. Any questions on the budget?
Any questions?
Just for the record, the specialty drug copay, and that's what we're talking about, specialty drugs, is $60 for a 30-day supply. So you're looking at, you know, a member could save $720 a year.
Okay. What else do we have?
Well, is that legal mumbo jumbo? Someone put that in there? All right, yeah. So I could be wrong. I think that's what that says.
Does that mean we automatically have agreed to this since we've watched your presentation?
I mean, it's not in small font, so I don't want to say that. Usually they say it real fast if it's a commercial. We'll definitely leave that with you. Is that? I feel like there's something else. All right. Context. So what the historic increases were on the health plan? I think that gives some idea of where we've been historically, which is pretty good. I think we came on in?
2017.
2017? Yeah. Oh, yeah. So this is since we've been on. So you can see the pattern there. In general, if you're doing better than 6% a year, if you're doing really good. You know, if we look in the context of how everyone has performed historically in the area, it's probably about 7, 8% a year are the average increases for a normal group not making any changes. You know, so if you do things to mitigate it, and there have not been that many changes to your plan in this timeframe. There have not been, as far as any significant benefit cuts. There's not been anything that really has a significant increase or a significant impact to bring this down. So it's just performance.
Yeah, employee contributions haven't increased in six years either. So most employers, you know, during the COVID period, for several years, were holding employee rates constant, flat. But the last couple of years have started, as trends have started to increase again, employers have started to increase employee contributions correspondingly again. So the fact you haven't done it in six years, we never want to say, you know, it's good to increase employee rates, but you'd be justified in doing so. Keep in pace with your increase.
Any questions?
If I could ask a question, Brandy Falcon for the record. David, can you go back to your budget slide? So the budget for medical claims is 11,296,840. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that is higher than what I had budgeted based off of our meeting in April, I believe. So just for the context of the commissioners, since we're in our budget cycle right now, based off these new budget numbers, that means I have to go in and increase our medical claims by 314,000. So that's going to put us at a further deficit on our preliminary summary, the sheet that you're used to seeing, right? And then, did I understand correctly, the savings for this payer matrix is, you're estimating $450,000 a year?
Yes.
Okay, so for the board to understand, when I net the savings from payer matrix and the additional increase presented here, we're going to see at maximum $100,000 shift on the preliminary summary. So I don't want you to think that after today's meeting, we're going to have a windfall. So just to give you some context.
So the $100,000, is that going down or up?
We'll have maybe $100,000 in savings after today, maybe.
Okay.
And it's all projected?
Yes, from our initial meetings, you know, we had, claims got a little worse one month, so it kind of drive that.
I'm just curious, have you segmented into more categories? Like, for example, you have tobacco use, right? And so that's a different category. Are there more categories that could be looked at for, as risk factors for contributions?
Like smoker, non-smoker rates, tobacco rates?
Exactly.
We have groups that do that, that do smoker, non-smoker rates.
Oh, they have, they have.
Yeah, just what else do you have besides that? Is that the only factor?
Surcharge. Some employers, if their spouse has access to other coverage through their own employer, some, but they join the county plans. Some groups will add like $100 a month surcharge to that person. Yeah, that's the biggest one. That and tobacco.
Everything else is a more comprehensive wellness program. You know, so the government makes it very easy on the smoking. They don't make it very easy on the other things. Because honestly, smoking saves the federal government more money. Because Medicare, less people have lung cancer, that's a big impact. So there's not too much, you know, basically when it comes to smoking, you can do a surcharge. When it comes to everything else, it's a discount.
Well, and when it's, when it's quantified, when you're actually, so if you do take like health risk metrics and say, hey, you know, we're going to measure four metabolic syndrome factors. And if you're within this range, then you're going to get a lower rate. And if you're outside this range, you're not. You have to create an alternative standards for someone that might not be able to meet those ranges because of a genetic condition, right? And so they have to be able to create a plan with their doctor and also they have to be able to receive that same reward. And so there becomes some compliance issues around doing that. We do have groups that do that. But it becomes a cost to administer that program as well, to do those biometric screenings.
Okay. Just one other question, unless anyone has any questions. How long has this payer matrix program been around?
I believe it's over 10 years.
It's been around, but it's not been integrated in regions for very long.
Correct.
You know, so it's only, that only started relatively recently and we're the ones who instigated it.
Several years integrated, or allowed, I should say, with regions.
Yeah. I ask because if it's been around for a while, how come we're just getting to it? One, and two, what other tricks do you have in your bag that you're holding back in future years that we could be talking about today?
Hold off on it. It's international sourcing of drugs is technically illegal. So, yeah, technically. It's not being enforced federally, okay? So three years ago, I would have been very cautious on recommending something like this. But the nature of this pharmaceutical industry now, the cost increases, there are not many pushbacks nationally. And if something did get pushed back, especially on the payer assistance program, okay, we back off that one and we use a different strategy going forward. So I don't think in the past, in my opinion, was worth the noise and the risk. That concern I had a couple of years ago isn't there anymore.
Well, the savings wasn't there. So the specialty drug cost that you've been spending has spiked in the last year and a half. So we have more people on these medications than we've had before. And people have not moved to the generics. When Humira came available, we thought more people would move there. But one of the problems that we had is that all the other manufacturers who make competing products that are different classes. So they all, all these drugs do kind of the same thing. They're immunosuppressives. So they work on rheumatoid arthritis, plaque psoriasis, Crohn's disease, but they work differently. So they have different classes. And so what we've had then is the year before Humira lost patent protection, there was a lot of movement in the marketplace where manufacturers were reaching out to doctors, doing all the stuff they do to promote their drug, to get people to use their drug instead of Humira, knowing that that would go the way that it did. And so since we've seen all these things come in and your specialty drug cost has increased, I think it's by about 30 to 40% last couple of years, the timing is right to do this. There were also some lawsuits, the PAP programs, and seeing how that could work. Because what we've seen in the past is where the lawsuits might have some more merit is some people were doing these PAP programs differently, where they were not excluding the drugs. So if the drug was part of the health plan and they were trying to do the PAP program anyway, that's kind of being knocked down. That's being problematic, whereas we're excluding it completely from the plan. So the method is more proven now than what the method was when different methods were being used in the past. I think there's a whole combination of factors.
I also think the risk in litigation is not, what I see is not directly with the employer. It's with payer matrix or those companies. I don't see the same risk for single employers doing this as I do. And again, if something did change, okay, we're going to go a different route. Because major action management has to be done on specialty drugs. The costs of these things are, as you can see, are exorbitant and we've got to start pushing back.
Well, they're building the R and D into the drugs that are sold in America and not overseas. That's why they're so much cheaper. But I presume that tariffs will be charged because that's the new thing now. So I don't see it being a regulatory issue because it's now a revenue issue.
Yeah, that's the conversation recently, 200% tariffs. If they don't manufacture drugs here, how that impacts on imports is going to be interesting also.
But that's at wholesale rates.
Yeah.
So it's different than if it were at retail.
Right, but I mean, the retail impact can be larger than the wholesale impact at times. So it's a little concerning, but like with a lot of things, I'm not, I don't know that that's going to come to pass. At least in this coming year, I think it's more negotiating tactics than it is actual going to happen. Because that, just politically, would be a killer, I think.
Understood. Any other questions, comments?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, for the bridge program, you had said that it's two years. After the two years is over, what's the recourse for the employees?
So that would no longer be available to the member at no cost share. So at that particular time, they'd look to see if they could internationally source that drug at a savings or to see if they could get that through Superior Biologics, a biosimilar. Or a plan, as David said, or a possible plan exception, you know, last case scenario.
And then my other question was, do you guys have a recommendation, if the board were to look at increasing the premiums, a recommendation on a percentage increase there?
We talked about it, which was, I thought we had a slide on it, but we don't, or do we?
And do you recommend doing it across all the categories? Because last time we increased, we didn't increase the employee only. We only did the dependents. But do you recommend doing all, like employee only and all dependents this time?
So here's the, in the summary. Now, that was, that was last year.
Yeah, I mean, if we're at, you know, 8.6 without payer matrix, what, five-ish with payer matrix? Yeah, anywhere from 5 to 7% funding increase to the county. And then I think equivalent employee contribution would be a reasonable approach across all tiers.
Equivalent as in 5% to the?
Yeah, whatever funding rate the county takes, surpass the same increase to employees. I think that would be a reasonable approach this year. And I think that range could be 5 to 7 and a half percent if you do payer matrix.
I would say that's what the majority of my groups, my other groups have decided to do. Is they're sharing that increase commensurately with their employees.
Yeah.
And then my last question was for the board. So as you know, we have our next budget meeting on Friday. Do you feel able today to give direction on if you want to move forward with this payer matrix program? Because if so, then I'll incorporate the savings into the budget before our next meeting. Or do you need more time to make, to give direction on that?
Thoughts?
I'm ready to go payer matrix.
There you go.
All right, so we'll go ahead and proceed with budgeting the savings from payer matrix. And Aliant can handle their end regarding that. And then I'll do some calculation. Does the board want me to do calculations on increasing premiums? And have that ready for the next budget meeting on Friday?
Thoughts on that?
Well, right now, the employee only is like $45 a month, right, for medical?
Correct.
So that's 4725. I mean, that's hardly anything to go up 5%.
That would be just the employee, but you know, there's all the dependents.
Well, the employee is the one we haven't raised lately. So I'm fine with having a 5% across the board calculation done.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All right, well. All right, well, thank you very much. Public comment. Hearing none, ten forty-nine.